We need to begin our public forum, if everyone will please take their seats. We have a notice public meeting for 6:30, a need to begin, folks. We have a notice public meeting for 6:30, a need to begin, folks.
Hey, you know, I found this jacket in my sock drawer, it's another one. Where'd everybody go? Where'd everybody go? They left us. That's what happens when refreshments start to run out. That's what happens when refreshments start to run out.
Okay, Commissioner Otto. Okay, Commissioner Otto.
Is there Otto in the house? Is there Otto in the house? You can bring your cake up. You can bring your cake up.
Commissioner Otto. Commissioner Otto. Okay, I assume Kent will find his way in here. I'm gonna call this Okay, I assume Kent will find his way in here. I'm gonna call this Monterey Board of Commissioners Public Forum Meeting to order. Monterey Board of Commissioners Public Forum Meeting to order. I want to bring a couple of things that are obvious to everyone's attention. One, Mayor Helms is not here. I want to bring a couple of things that are obvious to everyone's attention. One, Mayor Helms is not here. He is out of state, visiting his family. He is out of state, visiting his family. And I, as Mayor Pro Tem, will be presiding over the meeting. And I, as Mayor Pro Tem, will be presiding over the meeting. The other thing that is obvious is I'm sitting over here at a table, separate from everybody else. The other thing that is obvious is I'm sitting over here at a table, separate from everybody else. Actually, it's not that they don't like me, it's I've got a, I've got a bad cold. Actually, it's not that they don't like me, it's I've got a, I've got a bad cold. And so, wearing a mask and distancing myself, so that I don't infect anybody. And so, I'm wearing a mask and distancing myself, so that I don't infect anybody. Well, let's go ahead and begin. Please stand, face the flag, and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, let's go ahead and begin. Please stand, face the flag, and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's for the meeting part. That's for the meeting part.
I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, what?
We're just too welcoming. We're just too welcoming.
You don't do that for the public forum, I see. Got it. You don't do that for the public forum, I see. Got it. Okay. Okay. Well, welcome, and join me while we're seated in a moment of silence. Well, welcome, and join me while we're seated in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Does any commissioner wish to make a motion for adoption of the agenda? Does any commissioner wish to make a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved. So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote on the motion. All commissioners in favor, please say aye. If there's no discussion, we'll vote on the motion. All commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any opposed, please say no. The motion to adopt the agenda is approved unanimously. The motion to adopt the agenda is approved unanimously. Next, on the agenda is public comments. Next, on the agenda is public comments. Although we have two public comment sessions in our regular meeting, Although we have two public comment sessions in our regular meeting, because public business is being conducted, there is not the opportunity for much in the way of dialogue between because public business is being conducted, there is not the opportunity for much in the way of dialogue between members of public and the commissioners. members of public and the commissioners. This public forum is designed to provide an opportunity for such dialogue. This public forum is designed to provide an opportunity for such dialogue. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the Board of Commissioners at this time Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the Board of Commissioners at this time to discuss any matter that concerns them? to discuss any matter that concerns them? Anybody? Anybody? Okay. Okay. Apparently, nobody would like to make any comments today. Apparently, nobody would like to make any comments today. If there are no, therefore, since no members of the public wish to speak, does any commissioner wish to make a motion to adjourn? If there are no, therefore, since no members of the public wish to speak, does any commissioner wish to make a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. Any opposed, please say no. The motion is approved, and the public forum meeting is adjourned. The motion is approved, and the public forum meeting is adjourned. And we will, in 20 minutes, reconvene. And we will, in 20 minutes, reconvene.
That's right.
Yeah, we haven't done that.
Vicki's had him out tonight. He is adorable.
Oh, absolutely. I hope she thinks that. No, I'll definitely bring her up.
My granddaughter. My squat change is broken.
Okay, it looks like it's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
But he was right, that shows at six o'clock up there. So this is the staff trying to mess with us once again.
Keep you on your toes.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask that you join me in standing and begin our pledge of allegiance to the flyer. For me, I'm taking a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the adoption. Does any commissioner wish to make a motion regarding adoption of the agenda?
Someone?
Is there a second to the motion? All right, Commissioner Widmer has moved and Commissioner Crushay has seconded a motion that agenda be adopted in the form set forth in our agenda package. So everyone in the audience will know when we approve our agenda, we simultaneously approve the consent agenda. And at this time, and I will ask, or require us to ask if any members of the council have any questions. Regarding the consent agenda, are there any questions? Also, let me ask, does any member of the council have any item from the consent agenda they'd like to remove? If there are no changes to them to the consent agenda, is there any debate on the motion to approve and adopt the agenda? If not, all those in favor, say aye, please. Any opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Agenda is adopted. Next item on the agenda, Town Manager Communications, or rather the Mayor's Communications, and I'd like to read, and I gave this to Ben Blackburn, so he could read it, he laughed after our reception. He, he asked us to read this out aloud and we'll have the original sent to Ben. Ben, you were definitely God sent to Montre. You came to us a stranger only briefly, as we came to know you immediately. You brought a wisdom and much experience that enabled us to make great progress over the last two years. We can never begin to tell you how much we appreciate all you have done for the commissioners and the Montre community. I will certainly miss you and wish you great comfort and the much meaningful and loving times with your family. You will be missed and finally remembered in Montre. You are always welcome in our community and in our home. Your friend always, Tim Helms, Mayor of Montre, Port Carolina. As I indicated earlier, the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of our last two meetings on March night, were approved by virtue of us adopting the agenda. Next is Town Manager's Communications. Jason?
Yes, sir. So for you, just to provide a little bit of update, I've met with last couple of weeks, third week on the job. So it's been action packed with just meeting individuals throughout the area, whether it be citizens or individuals from the college or MRA, et cetera. Just trying to establish some relationships with those individuals, find out their basic takes on different things. I have had the opportunity to meet with Madder and Craig, folks that have been the engineer for the town on the bridge project. Getting caught up to speed with them, I plan on going into more depth with you all at the board budget meeting scheduled for next Thursday. I did want to find out from you all, the mayor did, it was originally proposed as nine o'clock. The mayor did have a conflict, so I wanted to see if you all were okay with starting that at ten thirty and running to approximately one thirty. Just to allow that, I think that worked for everyone. So that will give us something that we could put it out as a special call meeting. The purpose of getting some feedback from you in terms of direction for the budget. And hopefully by then, I'll have some additional information. We're still waiting on tax valuations from the county, also still waiting on insurance rate numbers from the league municipalities. So hopefully by next week, I'll have some of those numbers as well that I can incorporate and display and provide to you all. Didn't want to let you know that Public Works, Assembly Drive Intersection, they've been working on painting the stop bars, all of those are done. They've also begun painting the stop bars on secondary roads, hope to have those done. Additionally, they've been cutting back a number of trees off the rightways. So they've obviously, as always, I've been so impressed by the staff and how they conduct themselves and how hard they work. They're constantly looking at something for something to do, and you are truly blessed by just the staff we have. Trying to think of whatever else.
Do you want our answer, or?
Sure.
If I can leave literally before one thirty.
I'm gonna be out of town. Will I be able to call in?
We can call in or zoom. We can definitely make that work. I think you mentioned that to me before.
Yeah, and what is the time on that?
Uh, I was planning on starting at ten thirty next Thursday. And it should certainly be wrapped up by one thirty hour.
Tom and I both have a two o'clock, as I told you, so we're, you know, we need at least one thirty or shortly direct.
Sure, that shouldn't be a problem.
I've got a lot more free time than these retire people, so ten thirty works.
Well, then I'll send out a new budget schedule just for you all tomorrow, but that way that'll allow Angie to put that out as a special call meeting, starting at ten thirty. I'm trying to think, let's see, what else?
And Ken, would it be possible for us to send you any discussion items that we'd like to see covered either at that meeting or the subsequent meeting?
Absolutely. And I've spoke to the majority of you on the phone about different things as well, so if you have anything, feel free to send those to me, that'll help kind of construct exactly the objective for that meeting and know what we need to tackle or what we need to discuss. And also too, Rachel and I are working on kind of the transition from Harris, who is our financial software company into the Tyler tech company. We've got several meetings scheduled with them, just kind of, we've already done the welcome, the meet and greet. So we're gonna be doing those, I think it's either every week or every two weeks, every two weeks. Just to help steer that process, make sure that everybody's comfortable, make sure it goes smoothly, and that we're prepared and they're prepared. Because that is a large undertaking to switch all of that over. But I feel like staff can definitely assist in making that as smooth as possible. Their folks have been very gracious about working with us. And Mayor Pro Tem, that's all I have. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. I know Barry's got a few things later on that'll come up, but if anyone else has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions of Jason?
When will their transition to the new software be complete, do you think?
It's still very much up in the air. We probably, I'd say Rachel first of yearish.
First of fiscal or calendar?
Calendar. By the time we get, we've gotta do it should be up and running by that. It's just gonna be testing the bugs and everything else for it. I think that's I'll find out, I can send that out to you. I don't remember exactly what their timetable is. But it'll definitely be up and running by then.
So you won't be doing anything major prior to the audit?
Correct. I don't anticipate. It's just making sure that everything can be birded over. Doing all kinds of test trials and everything, making sure everybody's comfortable and how to operate it. But it would, it would definitely be after fiscal year starts and give us time to work out the bugs. But I've also talked to a number of different people in Western North Carolina, they use that software program, and they've been very pleased. They do a very good job of kind of working municipality through the convert. And that's the hardest part, is just making sure all the files, everything happens flow over.
I'm sure.
Any other questions of Jason? If not, we'll move to administrative reports. Written activity reports of all of our various departments are attached to the agenda package. Are there any questions regarding any of these reports? If not?
Can I just say one thing? Two things. Rachel, it's great to see some positive numbers again. Thank you for making it that way. And I appreciate Jason, and I guess it was Ben before you, starting to put in the P and Z report. That's, and Jay. It was in there for a while and then it disappeared, but thanks for getting it back in.
Any other comments regarding the administrative reports? If not, we'll move under into our first public comment. We have two public comment opportunities at each meeting, one near the beginning of the meeting and one near the end. This is our first public comment opportunity on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make any comments at this time regarding anything on the agenda or any other matter? If not, hearing no comments, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is old business. Is there any old business that the commissioners would like to discuss or address at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, new business. First item of new business is considerations of nominations to appoint a regular member to the Board of Adjustment. Currently, there is one resident member seat on the Board of Adjustment that is vacant. And we need to fill that vacancy. Floor is open for nominations to fill that vacancy.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to nominate Michael Broussard, whose home is on West Virginia to serve in that capacity.
All right.
And I've spoken to him and he is happy to do so.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Widmer has nominated Michael Broussard. Broussard. Any other nominations? Hearing none, is there any debate on the nomination? There being no debate on the nomination?
Make a discussion? Can we have discussion?
We can have discussion.
Do we need a second?
Just for everybody's knowledge.
We don't need a second, it's a nomination.
Just for everybody's knowledge, Michael is an attorney, has practiced for forty years and in this area that we might get ourselves into, that the Board of Adjustment is involved in. So I think he's very well positioned to help that board. Between the P and Z and this council will now have an attorney on that board as well. If you vote positively.
So we had one nomination and there are no further nominations. Not will close the nominations. What the rules require is a roll call vote. And so I will call the name of each commissioner and if you wish. Okay, thank you. If you wish to vote in favor of Michael Broussard, just please say aye. Commissioner Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Crushay? Commissioner Alexander?
Aye.
Commissioner Widmer?
Aye.
Mr. Blake also votes aye. Michael Broussard received five votes and is hereby appointed to serve as a regular member on the Board of Adjustment. Next item in new business is consideration of nomination to appoint a regular member to the Montre Land Care Committee.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I'd like to put forth the name of Arrington Cox.
All right. Commissioner Crushay has nominated Arrington Cox as a member of Montre Land Care. Are there any other nominations? There being no further nominations, I will call the role of the commissioners. When I call your name, please say aye if you wish to vote in favor of the nominee, Arrington Cox. Commissioner Otto?
Aye.
Commissioner Crushay?
Aye.
Commissioner Alexander?
Aye.
Commissioner Widmer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Blake votes aye as well. Arrington Cox has received five votes and is hereby appointed to serve as a member of Montre Land Care.
I might add that she's already serving as chair of that committee, so it's nice to have her official.
Doing a good job. Next is consideration of nominations to appoint a regular member to the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee consists of three members of the Town Council and two resident members. We have a vacancy for one resident member. Floor is open for nominations to fill the vacant resident member seat on the Audit Committee.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to appoint Hugh Alexander as a regular member to the Audit Committee.
Commissioner Otto has nominated Hugh Alexander. Are there any other nominations? There being no further nominations, the nominations are closed. Is there any discussion or debate on the nomination? There being no debate or discussion, I will call the role of the commissioners. Please say aye if you wish to vote in favor of Hugh Alexander. Commissioner Otto?
Aye.
Commissioner Crushay?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Commissioner Widmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Blake votes aye. Hugh Alexander has received five votes and is hereby appointed to serve as a member of the Audit Committee. The next item of the agenda is consideration of nominations to appoint a regular member to the Open Space Conservation Committee. The town appoints three resident members to this committee, one of those seats is vacant. The floor is open for nominations to fill the vacancy. Does any commissioner wish to nominate someone to this committee?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to nominate Mary Nell Todd as a regular member of Open Space Observation Committee.
Right. Commissioner Alexander has nominated Mary Nell Todd. Are there any further nominations?
I would just like to speak to, I've talked with Mary Nell, and I've also watched her, she has been on this board for a while. And she is very knowledgeable about open spaces and has a passion for keeping open spaces.
Thank you. We're lucky that Mary Nell is willing to serve again, and the same to be said for you, Alexander, on the Audit Committee as well. Okay, there being no further nominations, I will call the role of the commissioners. Please say aye if you wish to vote in favor of Mary Nell Todd. Commissioner Otto?
Aye.
Commissioner Crushay?
Aye.
Commissioner Alexander?
Aye.
Commissioner Widmer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Blake also votes ayes. Mary Nell Todd has received five votes and is hereby appointed to serve as a member of the Open Space Conservation Committee. The next item of new business is consideration of adopting a proclamation designated April twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three as Arbor Day in the town of Montre. Does any commissioner wish to make a motion regarding this agenda item?
I'll move to adopt the proclamation number twenty-three dash oh four dash zero 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 one, designating April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three as Arbor Day in the town of Montre.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Commissioner Crushay has moved and Commissioner Alexander has seconded the motion that we adopt the proclamation contained in your agenda package designated April twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three as Arbor Day in the town of Montre. The floor is open for discussion on the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on the motion now. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is consideration of adopting a proclamation designating April thirty to May sixth, two thousand twenty-three as Professional Municipal Clerk Week in the town of Montre. Does any commissioner wish to make a motion regarding this agenda item?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move to adopt a proclamation. Um, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move uh, to adopt a proclamation designating April thirty to May sixth, two thousand twenty-three. As Professional Municipal Clerk Week, and I do that gladly.
Second.
Commissioner Otto has seconded that motion. That we adopt the proclamation. Floor is open for discussion on the motion.
Can we have a party?
Yeah. Calls for another party.
If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved unanimously. The next item on, on the agenda is consideration of approving budget, item, budget amendment number one. Uh, Public Director Barry Creisman, if you would, please come to the podium and address the board regarding this item.
Pro Tem, Count. What we have here, a little history on this one, uh, when we did the budget last year, um, we figured a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for street paving.
For what?
We figured a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for street paving, road paving. And of course, we did not know where the power bill was going to fall at that time. Uh, Ben is where the power bill ended up at, um. But we put out a few roads and everything and got our bids back. And um, seeing that we were going to need to move a little bit of money from the power bill account into the capital outlet to make that adjustment for where we're going to go when we figure the budget. And you know, it ended up, uh, we were twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Is what we'll need to transfer over into that account should y'all decide to approve the amendment contract. That's, that's what we have right here with this amendment.
So we've got the funds, it's just that we need to transfer.
Yes, sir. We just need to transfer them over. Yes, sir.
Does any commissioner have any other questions, Barry? Okay, does any commissioner, thank you, Barry.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Pro Tem, I move to approve budget amendment number one in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. For budget, budgeted street paving.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Otto. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Otto has moved and Commissioner Alexander has seconded that we approve budget amendment number one, which is attached in your agenda packet. Floor is open for discussion. Is there any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, we will vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the opposed, please say no. The motion is approved unanimously.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I just have a question, Rachel. Is this the first budget amendment we've had in this fiscal year? Great job budgeting.
Okay, I'll second that. It is great job. The next item on our new bus, of new business we have is consideration of paving project approval of paving, paving construction contract proposal for Oklahoma Road Phase One. And authorize execution. Does any commissioner, Barry, do you want to come up and please say a few words regarding this agenda item as well?
This particular item is dealing with the paved portion of, paved portion of Oklahoma Road. Uh, talking with C and T paving and um, what we're going to do is we're going to do the stormwater in-house. Which on this particular contract saved us a little over seven thousand dollars on it. And so basically, we just amended it to show that the stormwater not in this particular, that's the only change.
And that's why it's a different number than what you presented last month.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that'll be the same on the next one too, which we'll have a savings of almost eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, good job. Between the, between the two.
Between the two, yes, sir.
Does any commissioner have any other questions, Barry? Very numb, Barry. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve uh, a pavement construction contract with C and T paving in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars for Oklahoma. Phase one pavement milling and curving and to authorize the signing of the contract by the town manager or Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Otto. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Otto has moved and Commissioner Widmer has seconded that we approve the pavement construction contract with C and T paving for Oklahoma Road Phase One that's included in your agenda packet. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Uh, I just have a question for Barry because I know we're going to be asked. This will be from Oklahoma at Appalachian Way all the way up to where it curves and the pavement ends?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It'll actually uh, extend down into Appalachian Way a little bit because we're going to redo that hill. Where, right now, it's currently chewing up from big trucks and stuff, so we're going to upgrade that a little bit. And then it will extend all the way to where the existing pavement.
Got you. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Is there any discussion? There being no further discussion, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved unanimously. The next item of new business is consideration of paving project, paving construction contract proposal for Oklahoma Road Phase Two. And authorization of the execution of that. Barry, you want to come up one last time, please, sir, and review this item?
This item here um, covers the gravel portion, which begins right there where I just, just talked about the pavement ending. And it will tie into the asphalt that is currently above the Colley's House where the old horse rank used to be. And um, it's the same as last month's contract minus the stormwater part of it, which is on this one here saves us about ninety-eight hundred bucks. So it's essentially the same, just minus the storm.
Would you? Correct. Would this be the largest unpaved section that we have left in Montry?
Yes, sir. I believe so.
But we still have additional unpaved that we've.
We've got a few that were in, it's just a couple of small stretches.
But this, this, this take out a big chunk.
Did you rotate?
Okay, good.
Eric, when, when do they think they'll start and finish?
I have talked with um, Mr. Culberson, Culberson, and we're hoping to do it late May, early June. Uh, we're, we're on the, the schedule. He went ahead and put us on the schedule. And if we can get earlier, we're going to get it all. Luckily, we're kind of up and out of, away from the prowls and the machine and stuff. We'll just have to be careful with the duct trucks and stuff when they come.
And you and your staff have the capacity to do the stormwater portion of it?
Yes, sir.
One more question while you're at the mic. I was hoping that since they didn't have to move equipment from site to site, that we might save a little money.
Yeah, it's just, it's hard to negotiate with them on that. That's why I decided to put the stormwater in. It'll just, for our cost to do it is a fraction of that eighteen thousand dollars. There's a good saving too.
All right. Any other questions, Barry? Barry, thank you very much. Does any commissioner wish to make a motion regarding this agenda item?
Yes, I move to approve a pavement construction contract with C and T paving in the amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-six hundred dollars for Oklahoma Phase Two pavement and curving. And authorize the signing of the contract by the town manager or the mayor Pro Tem.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otto. Motion is made by Commissioner Alexander and seconded by Commissioner Otto. The floor is open for discussion on the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. The motion carries unanimously. The last item of new business is consideration of updating account signature cards and resolution with First Bank. I would ask our town clerk, Angie Murphy, to review this proposed motion with us.
Yes, sir. We just need to take interim town manager Ben Blackburn off as a signature and add our new town manager, Jason, to the list of signatures. Everyone else stays the same. Commissioner Fuchet, Mayor Tim Helms, and myself, and Chief Arant, we remain on there.
But everybody's got to re-sign all the cards.
Everybody has to re-sign all the cards.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of Angie on the motion? All right. Does any commissioner wish to make a motion regarding this agenda item?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move uh, to approve uh, the following signers as Town of Montry Business Accounts Resolutions at First Bank. Police Chief David P. Arant, Town Manager Jason J. Burrell, Commissioner Catherine Kirk Fuchet, or as my phone says, Fush. Mayor Timothy R. Helms, and Town Clerk Angela Murphy.
Is there a second to Commissioner Widmer's motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otto. Floor is open for discussion on the motion. Does anybody have any discussion? If not, there being no further discussion, we will vote on the motion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. The motion is approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is our final public comment opportunity. Does any member of the public wish to make any comments regarding any item on the agenda or other matter? Sure. Please come forward if you would, please.
So I'm Shirley Mitchell, and I live at two oh one Harmony Lane, full-time resident, twenty-seven years. Um, the item I bring up is how we begin the meetings with a moment of silence. And the question I have, I thought that in the Montry Charter, we're a Christian town, are we? Is that in the charter?
Say that again.
Is, is, is it in the Montry Charter that this is a Christian town? For some reason, I thought it was. Well, anyway, uh, and I wrote, uh, Mayor Helms about this maybe nine months ago. But why are we having a moment of silence rather than acknowledging Jesus Christ is Lord? He says that if we are embarrassed about him, he is going to be embarrassed about us and the Holy Angels. I know that our former, uh, long-term mayor, Letitia Taylor, always opened in the name of Jesus. And uh, Bill Solomon, whenever he had anything to do with Board of Adjustment, it's in the name of Jesus. Are we as a town afraid of Jesus? And I'll just leave it as that. A moment of silence is just, in my opinion, stupid.
Well, I won't pass that on to the Quakers. Shirley, thank you for comments. I, I, uh, I think the major concern, uh, that I, I can't speak, I don't know why it's current conditions, moment of silence, but probably it is due to constitutional concerns. Um, I, 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 uh, I, I, I can ask town manager Burrell to look into that. We could certainly explore it. Don't want to just mess it out of hand. Uh, but uh, I, I assume there's some, some reason, but we'll certainly look into it. Well, yeah.
I'll certainly be happy to look into that. Um, I know it's several years ago, but a lot of communities started going to the moment of silence just for that reason, uh, constitutional implications. But I'll look at the charter as well and uh, verify that, give you back some feedback. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next, all right. Are there any other public comments? All right, next on our agenda is Commissioner Communications. Does any commissioner have communications they would like to share with the board or with the public?
Um, I would like to uh, just remind everyone that um, we have Arbor Day as well as the native plant sale on the twenty-second. But on Friday, April, and we're uh, glad that it's going again and looking forward to it. But uh, the day beforehand, uh, the college is sponsoring a cleanup day. That has been something that they had done in the past. Uh, it went by the wayside at some point. Uh, but there is uh, some interest on behalf of the students to renew that, uh, to go in that central business district area and clean up the town in preparation uh, for uh, the Arbor Day uh, celebration as well as the native plant sale. They are inviting us to be a part of that. Uh, that would be from three to five P M on Friday, April the twenty-first. Um, they will have uh, some snacks there for us, and all we're going to do is walk around and pick up trash.
Great, thank you, Tom. Any other commissioner? Communications?
Sure, real, real quick, I, I, and I, I think I'm okay speaking for the board here. We'd like to certainly welcome uh, our new town manager, Burrell. Uh, you know, we're excited to have you and, you know, I'll tell you, I was a big fan of, of Ben and very appreciative of what he's done the past year, but but I'm excited to see where you take uh, the town and take over in the helm and, and I'll just add that what I appreciate about uh, uh, Mr. Burrell, as I'm getting to know him, is I've already seen him reaching out into the community, into our, our neighboring community and building, as he spoke to, but building relationships. And uh, you know, thinking that's, that's a great, that's a great first foot forward, so thank you for that. And again, we look forward to uh, uh, working with you as we, as we move forward.
Any other commissioner communications? And I'll join in, in Kent's, in, in Kent's comments. You've done a great job in hitting the ground running. We appreciate it, Jason. Next is dates to remember. I'll recite the following. Yes, Angie.
That's you. Fair enough.
Oh. Sure. Attached, thank you. Commissioners. Attached to uh, your agenda package is, is the, the new bear ordinances that we uh, passed uh, during the January or February and March, um, town meetings, each required the town staff to put together a list of acceptable bear-resistant containers for people to buy and give them a variety and choice and so forth. We put together with, with Barry's help, those lists, they were included in your packets. There's, there's no approval required of the board, but I wanted you to see them, those lists. If you've got any input that you'd like to, to, to make regarding those lists, please give Barry a call or you, if you can't reach Barry, give me a call. But we think we've done a good job. Uh, most of the, most of the bear-proof materials that are approved there are either certified by the Grizzly Bear Bear-Resistant Container Committee of some sort, or our town staff is familiar with them and know they work. So that's it, but, but take a look at your packet and, and review those those, uh, that, those two lists if you would.
May I ask a question, Barry?
Yes.
Uh, Barry, I noticed that um, Aaron's welding fifty-five gallon drums are not on this list. Is, is that because they are not effective? I mean, I've seen the lids torn off of a, a few.
Yes, the reason that one did not make the list was, that's one of the containers that we have seen the lids just peeled back like a tuna can. If, if there were some changes made to where the bears couldn't actually get their toenails in there and, and were able to actually wedge the lid open, I'm sure that could, you know, be reconsidered.
Thanks.
That's the reason for that, sir.
Okay, any other questions regarding the bear-resistant containers list? All right. Let me get back to listing the dates. We need to remember the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meeting is Friday, April twenty-first at ten o'clock P M, A M, rather, in Town Hall. The native plant sale, as Tom mentioned, and Arbor Day celebration is Saturday, April the twenty-second from nine A M to, until two P M at Moore Center Field. The Tree Board meets Tuesday, April twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M in Town Hall. The Tree Board meets Tuesday, April twenty-fifth at nine thirty A M in Town Hall. The Board of of Adjustment Meeting is Thursday, April twenty-seventh at five P M in Town Hall. The Bridges Aesthetics Committee Meeting is Tuesday, May second at three o'clock P M in Town Hall. The Land Care Meeting is Wednesday, May third at nine o'clock A M in Town Hall. The P Z C Hillside Development Subcommittee Meeting, Planning and Zoning, that's Planning and Zoning Committee, Hillside Development Subcommittee Meeting. That's probably to consider revisions to that ordinance, meets Thursday, May the fourth at four o'clock P M in Town Hall. The Open Space Conservation Committee meets Tuesday, May ninth at three thirty P M in Town Hall. The May Town Council Meeting is Thursday, May the eleventh at seven o'clock in Town Hall. The public forum will start at six thirty. And the Tree Board will meet again May twenty-third at nine thirty A M in Town Hall. The Board of Adjustment, again, tentative, will meet again May the twenty-fifth at five o'clock P M in Town Hall. And Town Hall offices will be closed May twenty-ninth in observance of Memorial Day. Are there any other dates to remember that anyone like, would like to bring to our attention?
About the, um, budget meeting, is that, should that be in this list?
We can add that on there for May twentieth, uh, beginning at ten thirty.
A- April twenty-third.
Very April. Again, April twentieth. Um, and that'll be here.
And could you remind us again, the second, uh, meeting that you had told us about?
They have to look at that one. Believe it was. Believe it was going to be the third week in May, but let me, let me look at that. Well, I don't have it in front of me. I forgot.
Okay.
I, I can find that.
All right. There's nothing else to come before us. Does any commissioner wish to make a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fouché has moved and Commissioner Alexander has seconded the motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.